Go. It's time to wake up. 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 At the break of dawn and it's on again, better get ready to climb back on the limb. Come on, man, shake the dust off the fool. Don't yawn and prolong what you got to do. And if you've been going through any negative phase, well, here's your opportunity for turning the page. Today's a new chapter. Write to fly and make it end with the wind. Give it all you got. First, you gotta rise like a lurk in my life. Pick the dirt from your eyes and work on the pride. It is done, because we ain't even trying to lose. Let's go, man, double hit snooze. It's time to wake up. 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 Tick tock, tick tock. Let's go. Tick tock, tick tock. You can't wait around for someone to prove. Now is the moment to begin your renewal, man. Feel alive with the vibe energized of the folks who you're coming by the white in your eyes. Hey, another day might waste away. Come on, let's get it going. Don't make delay. So bring me along and lift your arm high like Georgia. We'll get a piece of the pie. Begin it with the step. You'll get in it in a sack. If you're winning like you never did it when you overslept, so right this minute. Get right with it. What time is it?
Good morning, Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty five. This morning, our invocation is going to be delivered by Councilor Carol Clark. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Pro Tim Wardine Alexander. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Good morning. Eternal God, we ask you for this. We thank you for this assembly of servant leaders and concerned citizens. We ask that you give us a bold faith in you, that we may lead this city in a way that is bold and effective. Give us courage to ask questions, have tough conversations, make difficult decisions, and always do what is right. Trust us with greater influence, Lord, that we may accomplish more good in service to our communities. Give us the strength to carry on when the days are long and weary and no one seems to care but us. Allow your pure wisdom to express through us and allow us to gracefully recover and grow from our mistakes. We are grateful to rest in the knowledge that these things and more than we can ever ask is already provided by your power, grace, and mercy. Amen.
Mr. Clark, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Hold on a second. Issues. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Morning.
Council, we have the minutes of the December third, twenty twenty four. I mean, yes, December twenty third through December seventeenth, twenty twenty four meetings before us. There's no additions or corrections. We'll consider a motion to approve the minutes.
I set a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meetings of December third through seventeenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor, let it be normal thing, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
All right, the minutes are approved. The minutes are not ready for the December twenty third, twenty twenty four through March eleventh, twenty twenty five meetings. This time, we'll have communications from Mayor Woodfin. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Council. It's good to see everyone. I didn't see you last week. Miss y'all. I'm glad you're back home. Just playing. It's all good. Just a couple of notes, Mr. President and Council. I want to start with the twenty twenty five kids and jobs program. We are seeking applications. City of Birmingham Department of Youth Services, in partnership with WBRC Fox Six News, has launched its twenty twenty five kids and jobs program. This summer, DYS, along with WBRC, six will put hundreds of Birmingham youth between ages of fourteen to twenty four to work through this program. Kids and Jobs is designed, as you know, to help cultivate the professional development necessary for youth to become integral part of our city's workforce. I just want to give parents and some of the older youth the eligibility requirements. One being you must be a Birmingham resident. You have to have a minimum over two point O GPA requirement. Must be at least fourteen years of age and cannot exceed age twenty four by June ninth, as well as full commitment to work from June ninth through June eleventh of this summer. Again, that's June ninth through June eleventh. I want to encourage those to learn more information at bhameuthfirst.org. Again, that's bhameuthfirst.org. On another note, we want to share the Women's Marketplace. We want to encourage you to shop, support, and network and connect at a free Women's Marketplace hosted by the Office of Innovation and Economic Opportunity on Saturday, March twenty ninth. This event will be, will take place at the gallery at the Pizitz, and it will be from twelve noon to four P M. In the vein of the Office of Innovation and Economic Opportunity, the Black Business Census is hosting an event we want to give you some detail about. We all know that our city thrives when our businesses and communities are seen, heard, and counted. I'm putting emphasis on counted, C O U N T E D. The Black Business Census is hosting its Counted and Connected Mixer on Friday, this Friday, March twenty first, at five P M at the Innovation Depot. Local businesses, community leaders, and professionals will gather to connect and share insights. But of note, it's important that we share that the Census plays a critical role in shaping the resources and funding that come into Birmingham, directly affecting Black businesses, entrepreneurs, and the neighborhoods we call home. So it's going to be important, and we want to encourage you to RSVP today at volunteer.bhamblackcensus.com. Again, that's volunteer.bhamblackcensus.com. My last note is related to the Crime Commission Report. As you know, in the month of February, I came before this council and gave an update. That update was heavy. Heavy emphasis was placed on the policing side of what we've done the first thirty days of the Crime Commission Report. Today's public report, what I want to share is some of the focus deterrence and the intervention piece that's been going on, which complements what's happening on the enforcement policing side. So just a few notes. One of the statuses I want to give an update on is implementing a focus deterrence strategy. Well, Chief Pickett, as you know, has already done that on the policing side since January, they've made numerous felony and misdemeanor arrests where that's public information provided on a weekly basis of targeting areas and/or people. But there's actual carrot sides of that as well, as far as the resource piece of giving people an opportunity to get out of that street life. And how can we assist you, whether it's onboarding a job or anything of that nature? So I'm happy to report that the Office of Community Safety Initiatives met with Chief Pickett and the BPD leadership February twenty first to discuss that a strategy around that aims to reduce not only the crime piece by targeting the high-risk individuals and groups with the law enforcement piece, but also on the social services piece. And so that's set to take place from a strategic standpoint and going deeper, launching March twenty fourth as well as twenty fifth. You will continue to provide updates on the Hospital Violence Intervention Program and expand the emergency departments in the region. As you know, that's in progress as well. Just a little bit more detail, MOU is currently being reviewed by legal to get to the next step, to get this program into the emergency room. But in tandem with that, the training is already set to begin for the hospital violence interrupters. And that, that literally starts this week, the seventeenth through the twenty first, for that training for those who can engage and be in the emergency room. The other piece we want to announce is there's an actual violence reduction strategic plan that we want community members input from. So just of note, there's a community feedback sessions taking place this week. The sessions are important as it relates to getting the feedback, getting the input, taking questions, concerns, as well as suggestions and ideas from community members on shaping the, shaping the safer Birmingham. The session, again, provides those opportunities to reflect on community needs. The date is this Wednesday, March nineteenth. The time is from four P M to six P M. The location is the Birmingham Crossplex. That address is twenty three forty Crossplex Boulevard, Boulevard. For those who cannot attend in person to listen to that meeting and/or engage, there is a virtual option, and you can find that information at birminghamal.gov/CSI. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/CSI. If you're wondering what CSI stands for, it stands for Community Safety Initiatives. We also talked about implementing and expanding street outreach engagement, which I know for the last two years, I've spoken with Councilor Tate and Councilor Smithman about, of course, your other seven colleagues are championing you all as well on making sure we engage in this topic. So just wanted to give you an update. Local organizations have been and continue to be engaged. One of those organizations, Trajectory Changing Solutions, with Norman Kerr, has begun their work, and the CSI team have begun interviewing jobs, interviewing for jobs that have already been posted. This work launches next month in April, and we're very excited about it. I know you all are as well. And then we talked about establishing a community violence prevention engagement forum. That is also in progress. The team has met this month with, via the Magic City Peace Collective. MCPC is a Birmingham-based initiative that's dedicated to reducing violence as well as fostering public safety through collaboration and community-driven strategies. Just to add a couple of things, they bring together grassroots organizations, service providers, law enforcement, public entities, and city agencies to develop and implement effective violence intervention and prevention efforts. And they've been meeting, they meet on a bi-weekly effort, sharing updates and strategies as it relates to violence reduction in Birmingham. And the last note, you all are aware of this, actually not the last note, just a few more notes. You all are aware that there has been very productive movement in the House and the Senate related to a bill banning Glock switches. Passed in the Senate, passed in the House, I think there has to be a reconciliation period before we can get to the governor's desk. The reason I bring it up, because you, we know that usually when the governor signs bills, it goes into effect at a later date. I'm happy to tell you all that as soon as the governor signs this bill, it will go into effect right away, immediately. That will be important for our police. That would be a good tool. I think this is also a good time to share with the public who always says, there's already a federal bill. Why do you need a state bill? I actually found that question very confusing because there are state bill, there are state laws that mimic all federal laws. So why wouldn't you have a state law to mimic this, to give our local DAs and local judges the tools they need when we know there's already a backup and it takes them a considerable long time at the federal level? So this bill, this tool, is very useful for local law enforcement, our local DA in Jefferson County, and our state judges to enforce this. This is also different from the federal government, and it gives more teeth as well, because it's just simple possession. So even if you don't have the gun, and, you know, we're not afraid to publicly share it. People have gotten clever. I would say about a year and a half ago, these conversion devices used to be on the exterior only. But through our investigations and arrests lately, we found that sometimes it's placed on the inside, as well as sometimes we find that they try to destroy the device. Well, in this bill, any form of the device, even if you don't have the gun, simple possession of it, you're in violation of the state law. So this is meeting, needed, and very important to fighting this issue that we had a lot of lives lost because of these devices in twenty twenty four. Two more notes. There was a conversation around, or recommendation that is, not a conversation. There's a recommendation on how do you reduce on-call for detectives to reduce burnout, as well as restructure the homicide unit to alleviate caseload and pressures. Well, I want to start with this point. As you see, there have been a lot of arrests, not just in twenty twenty five, with a seventy-five percent clearance rate since January one, but weekly, we find that the police continue to make arrests from some of the homicides that occurred in twenty twenty four. And so we're encouraged by the additional resources that have been given to the investigative bureau to continue to investigate and solve crimes, not just twenty twenty four, but other cold cases as well, as well as the highest clearance rate I think the city's had in quite some time, just in the first quarter of this year at seventy-five percent. One last note, there's a recommendation to make sure there's a foster better relationship between BPD and partners in parole. I think you all have read enough articles in this first quarter of the year, we find ourselves where people are on probation or parole or some form of having stood in front of a judge and then find themselves out back in community committing another crime. They have started a, a, a deep dive in relationships and over-communication, as well as a liaison from BPD to partners in parole to make sure that there's no stop or gap in communication related to if we know someone is not doing what the judge has ordered him to do while on probation and/or what the state has required while on parole, that we can immediate respond to make sure they don't do anything that gets someone else hurt or another person becomes a victim of crime based on whatever the circumstances are. So very glad to see BPD engaging, partner in parole's command staff, along with BPD's command staff, have that liaison in place and fostering that communication. There's also a recommendation to develop a criminal history research system. The Personnel Board, I'm happy to say, right, right here on the other side of the park, there are twelve job openings for analysts to create that world. We just got to make sure we got quality people in the pool to apply, and so we can build out that research system. Then, as you know, how in where I started, the Special Operations Bureau created the SET Team. This stands for Special Enforcement Team, who only focus on hotspots. They do not respond to nine-one-one calls. It is their responsibility to be present in community, be engaged in community, whether they're riding around, walking around, whatever form of their presence is. I'm happy to say, under the leadership of Chief Pickett, since the SET Team has been in a position since January one, they, overall arrests have been five hundred and twenty-one. The breakdown is felonies, three hundred and thirty arrests, misdemeanors is a hundred and ninety-one. Gun seize is a hundred and fourteen of those, seventeen were stolen, ten were altered in the form of some type of device. And then they've also recovered sixteen stolen vehicles, which is extremely important, because when you want to track the trend of crimes, whether it is shooting into an occupied dwelling or shooting into an occupied vehicle, it is usually, that discharge usually comes from a moving vehicle that is stolen. So the hyper-focus in partnership with the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, to have a laser-like focus on stolen vehicles, either retrieving them or preventing it from happening, definitely reduces gun violence in the short and long term. And with that, Mr. President and Council, that concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question, so.
Oh, and I owe you information that you and I will discuss today in detail. It requires a, it requires a verbal explanation that I want to give you context to.
Okay.
Related to cameras.
Great. So I was in DC last week and was walking through Union Station and saw advertisements from New York City actually targeting, you know, federal employees that find them in a position of being unemployed. So you mentioning the twelve positions that are open for analysts just brought to mind, I believe in the eighteen, in the fifteen point eight million dollar incentive package that we approved recently, there, some of that.
Marketing.
Funding.
Marketing, advertising. Yes, sir.
Yes, okay, so.
Short update?
Yes, that would be great.
Rick Journey's not here, so I'm paraphrasing. We've gone through a whole bid process, if I am correct. I'm sorry, request for proposal process, not a bid process, just because it's a professional service. We've gone through a request for a proposal process. I think it took, what, two months or minimum eight weeks, probably possibly twelve, where organizations, local and nationwide, applied to be the organization that holds themselves out on the city's behalf, third-party organization, if you would, for marketing, throwing a wide net in the nation, if you would, similar to what you've described. While being in DC, you've seen promotions from New York. We've culled that list now. Rick Journey is leading that effort in, in, in consultation with BPD and their team to pick a finalist, and then once the finalists is picked, they then have to go through another process of what happens next before they can roll out a marketing, actual campaign. We're hoping with the monies you approve, that, that campaign, that marketing campaign actually starts this summer. The tributaries, we're already pleased, again, with the results of what we've seen. I think a lot of community members, y'all, started stepping up the last quarter in twenty twenty four, when the, when we had the height of crime, the, the ending of the third quarter of twenty twenty four. You know, the November class, again, has over twenty people. There's a January class that had at least ten people. And I think since November, separate from that class that started, a hundred and eighty people expressed interest. Of note, and we made this public, but I'll share it again, there was supposed to be a class that started at the end of this month. The BPD has been working with APOS, and so they're trying to figure some things out, but the date has been extended. The class will start April seventh. So we all will know, the ten of us, along with the public, will know how many people will be in this class that starts April seventh. But I'm extremely encouraged that this class will, will, will be a significant number, that residents will be able to feel and see when this class finishes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the update. I think that it's overall extremely encouraging to, to, to hear some of the follow-through. One question, you mentioned the SET Team. How is the SET Team different from our task force precincts that we previously had, and do we still have those task force precincts?
So do not let me misspeak. Do those precinct task force still exist? I've learned in these spaces, if I don't know the answer, don't make up one.
Okay.
So let's get that answered, that part answered, literally this morning.
And then I'm still waiting.
Other question, it was two-part question. I do think there's a difference. Recall last year when we were pretty much getting our butts kicked related to exhibition driving. The state, our Jefferson County delegation, our senators and our representatives were kind enough, literally in the middle of the session, to help us, because we didn't have a pre-pound bill, right? That law was created, that outlawed exhibition driving, not just in Birmingham and Jefferson County, but statewide. While, while this was going through its motion, at the time, it was Deputy Chief Michael Pickett over special operations tasks with creating a team designed to only focus on this issue. And then you all started seeing results, post the governor signing that bill. This team was really designed. The SET Team is very similar in the sense that is a, is a laser-like focus on that, on that percentage of people who would be the most violent criminals. It's focused on those who are riding around with the guns, who are discharging firearms, who are robbing people, et cetera. They, forgive me for not knowing the exact number, but I think what we can do is make sure Chief Pickett provides more detail of the SET Team to you. But I think you all see the results, which are literally provided weekly of how many arrests they're making with felonies and misdemeanors. I think what makes it different, you know, the, what you described earlier, that's per precinct. This is more like a citywide task force, if you would, but with the particular focus on that type of crime.
Okay, so I have a lot of questions, but I think that it would be better if we were able to sit down and talk about it. Because, you know, when we passed the budget, I asked to sit down with you and interim Chief Pickett, and, you know, there's a lot of status questions that I've asked numerous times, like why we're not putting our misdemeanor warrants in NCIC, for example. Like all of these questions, like I keep asking and I, and I keep getting told I will get a follow-up. So. Can I please get the follow-up? Thank you. That's all.
Pro Tim Alexander.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those updates on the initiatives and where we are with some of those initiatives that centered around the Crime Commission Study. So I appreciate that. When we were in NLC, and the president has talked about that, and I think each of us probably that visited, we're going to be providing updates. But when we went on Capitol Hill and was able to talk with our federal legislators, we did discuss the need for public safety partnerships to protect our neighborhoods. And so I'm happy to see that some of these initiatives we are seeing as well. They were already in place, but we're seeing more of those. So could you give us those updates in writing, or where could we find that? Because I'd like to share that with my neighborhoods and make them aware of where we are with these initiatives. So could we just get something, or is it updated?
You'll have it Thursday in a format that's digestible to you, the public, neighborhood officers, everyday people, everybody.
Okay, thank you. And the second thing, I do want to commend, there is a lot of interest after you placed the video of someone performing illegal dumping. So that has been, I think it's been very helpful to all of us, because residents can see how they can play a role in trying to minimize that. And I, go ahead.
Look, we don't, we're not trying to get nobody to go play detective. Or catch people, put a cape on. But we also find ourselves in a situation where this has been a consistent problem. I can tell you all with no hesitation, what's the name of the street? We went out to, we went out to District Four yesterday, another area behind the airport. Cannot think of the name of the street. It's, it's. It's Southwest Boulevard, but it's not on West Boulevard. Anyway, I can tell you all, it's two big signs. It's like the signs that track people to dump. It's one sign over here that says, no dumping. This sign gives more detail on this side, no dumping, it's illegal, here's the ordinance, et cetera. And then it's just a massive dump site where you can clearly see these signs have been there for years. Marshall? Marshall Avenue. We cleaned the site up. Like I'm watching Public Works clean the site up. This is yesterday, less than twenty-four hours ago, because it's after one o'clock. We sent another team member back out there. Tell me why when that team member got there, it was already stuck back on the ground. This is not even twenty-four hours. This, this is literally maybe three hours, maybe. And so the point I'm making about, we don't want vigilantes out here, but man, y'all captured everything else. Y'all always finding ways to show some. But man, y'all captured everything else. Y'all always finding ways to show some video, some recording of some fight or something else stupid or something else silly. If you can help us catch these people in the act, that will be very helpful. Um, because we gotta, we want to shame them. We want to put them on blast. We actually want to arrest them and charge them. And I know some folk think you got better stuff needing to focus on, like gun violence. Well, let me tell you, we can walk with you gun at the same time. We can, we can decrease crime, we can focus on gun violence, and also focus on keeping our city clean. You don't have to pick either or, and we will do both.
Very good. I just want to say, I do feel those videos were very empowering. I have a video right across the street from me just last week, uh, was probably a contractor or landscaper that came to the lots that are empty and just dumped that trash. Since then, it has now become other people. I, I don't know if they ride around and just look for places to drop things off, but it is growing daily. So uh, we're just waiting on our next bulk trash pickup, but I do want to, though the residents, they are empowered by this tool. And um, if you report this to three one one, it really helps. But in this case, the individuals saw me, Miss Kravitz, me uh, peeking out the window doing this and just continued to keep it going. So um, I do, I, I agree with you. This can be a very powerful tool. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I know that, you know, this may not be the case in all uh, situations, but you know, in that instance, I think, you know, us really blocking off streets and blocking off a lot of these vacant areas where there aren't any, you know, houses, um, businesses, things of that nature, um, and reducing the amount of access that people have to dump, uh, would be extremely helpful. Um, so that, you know, uh, a lot of the areas where they would try to dump would actually have residents so that they could have their phones and be more vigilant to, to record. Um, I think a lot of the issues that we're having is because we don't have eyes uh, in these different areas. Hence the reason why we want to be able to get cameras and we want to be able to, you know, capture folks. But if we could block off some of those streets, it would, you know, help us in reducing the amount of work that, you know, um, Public Works has to do, um, the complaints that you receive as well as us. And so, you know, I would just ask that, you know, we, you know, look at a plan to, to really block off those areas.
Yes, sir. This started, excuse me, you know, on this Marshall Street, I was out there. I'm telling you in walking distance, it turns residential. You can see a house from the site. So we can't do all streets like that, but trust me on the ones we can, particularly again in four and nine, some have, um, two has, you have a lot of landmass as well, but not it doesn't happen though at the rate it happens in some of their areas where there's a lot of land. But, working on his suggestion actively.
Mr. Mayor, um, Pro Tim Alexander's um, comments reminded me that yesterday you also made a uh, social media post kind of highlighting some of the uh, recent street paving uh, that's happened around the city. And I was reading through some of the comments, um, that, you know, residents were really kind of pointing to some of our utilities companies that um, are responsible for a lot of the patches and things in, in the road. So um, just wanted to make you aware that the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee will be meeting next Monday. We have asked all of our uh, utilities providers um, to come to that meeting prepared to give a report on uh, work that is currently in progress or uh, anticipated over the, the next, through the rest of the year. And, and that includes overhead utilities as well as uh, underground utilities. You know, even our own stormwater division, we've, we've asked to uh, come and report to us. So uh, you know, if, if you want to have team members there, I would certainly welcome and encourage that.
Have fun. Do what you gotta do.
But uh, you know, it, it, this is um, become
A problem.
Well, it's, it's always been a problem and, but.
But the amount of paving we've done, y'all, over the last, what, six, seven years, to the tune of sixty million dollars? And you, you, we pave a street and then come right behind us and tear it up, and then don't replace it back the way it was. That's
Right, absolutely.
It's extremely like, it doesn't work.
So as you were encouraging people to uh, document, you know, illegal dumping, I'm also encouraging them that anytime that they see someone excavating the street, just pull out your phone and snap a picture. Um, most of those vehicles, you know, will have the contractors' information on, on the door. And, and that really helps us uh, to be able to um, track down who's responsible if they don't come back in the appropriate amount of time and put a permanent patch in place. So, or, you know, making sure that if the street has recently been paved within that five-year window, that they're paying the appropriate fee for doing street excavation in that case. Any other questions? Um, Counselor Moore, I'll come back to you, then Counselor Clark. Counselor Moore, go ahead.
Uh, so I would also encourage uh, us possibly, you know, engaging uh, ALDOT as well. I know we still have several eighteen-wheelers that are riding through residential areas and still tearing up, you know, uh, streets, uh, especially in District Four. And so, um, I know I've, you know, asked that residents take pictures of those trucks so that we can identify where they're actually coming from. I know that they have found this shortcut as a result of, you know, us updating, you know, like the highways um, a short time ago. And so, just really trying to make sure that they're not still riding through our, our residential areas as well, uh, tearing up roads.
All right, thanks. Uh, Counselor Clark.
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna say is that we do give out permits for people to excavate. So would that help?
When they apply for them, yes.
I know, but even, I know sometimes they don't, but when they do, but, but when we, when they do, we still give them to them regardless of the age of the road.
Right.
Right? Do we?
Yes, that's the, the protocol.
Yeah, so I'm thinking that would help, just to be able to access that data too.
Absolutely.
You know, when, when people do it the right way, we still give it to them. We give them the permit when they need it.
Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to comment, Mr. Mayor, and uh, thank Ms. Alice Williams also for um, helping lead the camera project for District Nine. And you posted a video about Slayton Avenue, so got a chance to watch it, to hear that camera that you guys was walking by and said, if you, you know, dumping, um, you, you will be caught or whatever. But Alice did a great job at helping facilitate the opera project for District Nine. So a lot of those cameras, you know, are in District Nine, and I have seen, you know, some additional cameras as well, um, one on my street. I, I don't know who put it there, but it's one in North Birmingham on Twenty Fourth Street. Also, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to lift this up as well um, to code enforcement, like us, a lot of people are still parking on sidewalks and a lot of people are still using community to park their eighteen-wheeler trucks with the trailers, you know, attached to them as well. So if we can kind of keep an eye on that, because I do report a lot of trucks that are, you know, overnight parking, you know, in community. And um, of course, the community is not a truck parking space. And I just think it's laziness on the behalf of those um, drivers that are, you know, driving these trucks to park, continue to park into, to neighborhoods. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Clark, you got one more thing?
One more kind of off-topic thing. Um, somebody mentioned ALDOT, and it triggered me about uh, CityWalk. And I know that, you know, CityWalk is a big new amenity in our town that we're all enjoying and that uh, there was some funding originally for management. Um, how will that continue to be, how will the operation of CityWalk continue to be funded? And then even parks like Railroad Park that have a private management agreement, they struggle to make ends meet. So are we, you know, in the budget cycle looking at, you know, shoring up some of the operations of our better parks?
Well, look, I want to be very clear. I really, really do on this topic. And Dr. Quinn can fill me because I feel like or are we plaintiffs how many years ago?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Um, teen years ago? All of our parks are very important to us. That's where I want to start. But I also want to start with what's our responsibility and what's not. CityWalk is state of Alabama property, not city of Birmingham. We don't own it. We don't operate it. And I want to be extremely clear, it is not our responsibility. However, we believe in being good partners. We believe in relationships. So in that vein, we, we want the conversation to continue with the state of Alabama Department of Transportation, along with BJCC, who has a management agreement between the state and BJCC. The city of Birmingham is not in that agreement on purpose. We are encouraged with the direction, and we're also frustrated with the direction. Ultimately, it's the state's responsibility. We continue to talk to the George Leonard, who leads East Division on behalf of the Alabama State Department of Transportation. Now, when I say we want to be good partners, what does that look like? We believe the city of Birmingham, along with Jefferson County Commission, along with the Convention Bureau, along with BJCC, along with the private sector as five organizations. We can come together and support the state, but we have a very clear expectation that the state whose job it is, whose property it is to maintain their property, but as five partners, we're willing to come along and assist at, in some form that makes any sense. The other piece is Railroad Park is, has a unique it's a unique asset in our community in the standpoint of as I understand it, and Chad's is gonna correct me if I'm wrong, those four city blocks from Fourteenth to Eighteenth Street are our property. It's our property. Um, however, there is a management agreement as well as another agreement, it's two agreements that it is managed by third party. And so we have a higher responsibility. Uh, and we already have an agreement, which includes a financial commitment to Railroad Park. But the reason it is that agreement exists is because it's our property, like the Museum of Art, like Vulcan Park and so many of our other assets that are managed uh, by a third party or co-managed by a third party. Hope I answered your question.
You did, and I look forward to the resolution. And I, I agree with you, there are lots of stakeholders in CityWalk's um, operation or continued, you know, high-level operation. So I think those, that's a good team to uh, tap, but we gotta get it resolved.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Mr. Clark, do we have any nominations to boards and agencies?
No, sir.
Okay. This time we'll read our statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clark, could we please read through our consent agenda?
Okay, well, consent agenda starts on page two with items one, two, three, and four. Please note that on item, on three, the committee didn't meet, I mean, on item one, I'm sorry. So that is just a recommendation from the chair. That's on item one. And then on item three, we have the GL account number for item three, which is zero zero one underscore zero 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 underscore zero four two eight zero. Uh, then that's five four two dash zero zero one. And for item four, the GL code is zero zero one underscore zero 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 underscore zero four two two zero. And then that's dash five four two, um, that's zero zero one as well. And we'll pick back up with the consent agenda on page three with items five, six, s- and seven. And note on item five, it is recommended by the Chair of Budget and Finance, and that's the same thing. It goes for items six and seven. And on item six, we have discretionary funds for items, I'm sorry, for districts two and five. That's for item six. And item eight has been requested to be withdrawn. That's item eight. Page four, items nine, ten, and eleven are on consent. And please note that all three items were recommended by the Chair of Budget and Finance. And we have the GL count for item eleven is zero zero one underscore zero 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 underscore zero four two two zero, uh, point five four two dash zero zero one. That's on item eleven. Page five, we have items twelve, thirteen, and fourteen on consent, and they're all recommended by the Chair of Budget and Finance. Page six, we have items fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen on consent. Please note that item fifteen was recommended by the Chair of Budget and Finance and discretionary funds for districts two and five, uh, for item fifteen. Item sixteen, we have a GL count number zero zero one underscore zero 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 underscore zero four two nine zero, that's five four two dash zero zero one. That's for item sixteen. Page seven, we have items eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one on consent. Please note there are changes for the um, summary for item eighteen, uh, replacing the company Traffic and Parking Control with uh, Navitas Credit Corporation. And it should be, it should read, starting with line two, finance agreement with Navitas Credit Corporation under which Navitas will provide parking equipment. So we're just replacing TAP code with Navitas. Page eight, we have items twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four on consent. Please note that the monetary amounts for districts three and eight are as following. Uh, I, uh, District Three, thirty thousand dollars, District Eight, ten thousand dollars. Page nine, we have items twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight on consent. Page ten, we have items twenty-nine and thirty on consent. Page eleven, we have items thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five on consent. Page twelve, items thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine are on consent. Page thirteen, items forty, forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three are on consent. Page fourteen, items forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven are on consent. Page fifteen, items forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-one are on consent. Page sixteen, items fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-four are on consent. Page seventeen, we have items fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and sixty on consent. That concludes the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I apologize for you continuing with your agenda. I failed to make a very important note that I'm pretty sure most of you already know. I wanted to wish Hunter Williams, your colleague, a happy birthday today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it.
Hunter, would you, would you like us to sing for you?
I absolutely do not. And after, after I turned thirty, I stopped celebrating my birthday, so.
All right. Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Mayor. Um, do we have any, does the council have any items that they wish to add or remove from the consent agenda? Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I um, I don't really want to take it off consent, but on page twelve, item thirty-eight, I wanted to know what a firearm suppressor was. How do you suppress a firearm?
Yeah, I believe these are devices that are probably.
Yeah. So, I, I believe the answer would be that the mayor's going to say is, you know, and part of our tactical operations group does have to use, has to practice with some suppressed firearms, or I guess the slang word would be silencer.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
I know what that is.
That, that, that's not in our uniform patrol vehicles. That's, that's part of a tactical response team that we, that we have.
Okay, I understand. I just was curious, and I don't like to approve things that I don't know what they are. So, thank you. That was, that was all.
Any other questions, additions, or removals from the consent agenda from the council? All right. We also have some public hearing items that are marked for consent. Do any members of the public wish to remove any of our public hearing items from the consent agenda?
Mr. President.
Counselor Abbott.
Before we move ahead, I just had one other thing.
Sure, go ahead.
Item twenty-four, I think it was announced that District Three was providing thirty thousand and District Eight was providing ten. And I believe that District Three is twenty thousand.
And I believe that District Eight is twenty thousand.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So, just hold them, please.
So, twenty and twenty.
Yeah, it's still be forty thousand, but it was just the numbers were off a little.
Okay.
That was all.
Thank you for that correction. I believe we're ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, the consent agenda is approved.
All right.
First item, please. Going to be.
Item eight was withdrawn.
Thirty-one.
Looks like we're going to thirty-one. Item thirty-one, a resolution appointing five members to the Birmingham Planning Commission. For one member to fill the un-aspire term of Christopher Tyler Burks, said term aspiring on October the sixth, two thousand and twenty-eight. One member to fill the un-aspire terms of Mashonda S. Taylor, said term aspiring October the sixth, two thousand and twenty-six. Two members for terms aspiring October the sixth, two thousand and twenty-nine, and one member for a term aspiring October the sixth, two thousand and thirty.
All right, so Counselor Abbott, this is Chair of the Planning and Zoning Committee. Do you have additional information?
Yes, the members of the Birmingham Planning Commission, we have Daniel Christensen, who is taking the place of Mashonda Taylor. She resigned on, in December of twenty-four. Jason B. Avery is replacing Christopher Burks, who moved out of state. Reappointments of existing members are Haley Colson Lewis, Dr. Naisha Black, and Ronald Crenshaw. And they're appointed for six-year terms. Yeah, reappointments are Haley, Haley Colson Lewis, Naisha Black, and Ronald Crenshaw. Those are reappointments. Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay, any discussion?
So, I, I move the item unless there are other nominations.
Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Now, do we need another motion on the approval of the nominations?
Okay, all in, now, get a second.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Okay. Those appointments are approved. Item thirty-two, please.
Item thirty-two, a resolution appointing three members to the zoning board of adjustment. One non-affiliated member for a term aspiring November the twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirty-one, non-affiliated member for a term aspiring November the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-nine, and one non-affiliated member for a term aspiring November the twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirty-one.
All right, again, Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the zoning board of adjustment, we have the reappointment of Philip Foster. He's an at-large member. We have the new appointment of Janice Smith to a Realtor position or member of the Realty Community, replacing Madeline Bowie and another at-large position, Ladera Lee, replacing Torrin Brazel. So those are the three appointments for the zoning board of adjustment. On Ladera Lee, the new term shall expire on November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-nine. The reappointment is until November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-eight. And the appointment of Janice Smith is until November twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirty. And all of these appointments were recommended by the Planning and Zoning Committee, and I move approval.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Okay, those appointments are approved. Next item?
I guess it's for the items we've got.
Okay, all right. Now for new and old business, Counselor Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quickly, a couple announcements here. The Sun Valley Neighborhood Association will meet tonight. That meeting will be held via Zoom at six thirty PM, so I look forward to connecting with everyone in Sun Valley this evening. And then also, we're, we're partnering with Blackberry Riverkeeper during spring break next week to bring a presentation on hip-hop in the environment. And so Shaheed and DJ Supreme on March twenty-sixth at two PM will be joining us at the Spring Barrow Library, so just working to kind of provide some activities for the young people that'll be out on spring break and encourage them to be litter-free and keep the community clean while we're here. So, thank you very much.
Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Evergreen Neighborhood will meet tonight at five PM at the Evergreen Missionary Baptist Church. East Thomas Neighborhood will meet tonight at six PM, and that's on Zoom. You can call the office at two, five, four, twenty-three, oh, two for the Zoom ID in Pasco. Smithfield Estates Neighborhood Meeting will be tonight at the Daniel Payne Plaza. South Pratt Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six PM at Lively Hope Baptist Church. Enslie Neighborhood Meeting will be held on Thursday, March twentieth, at six PM at Enslie Rec Center. Drew Hill Neighborhoods will meet on Monday, March twenty-fourth, at six thirty PM at Protective Stadium. The next Public Safety Meeting will be held on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, at one PM. Please submit agenda items by email no later than Wednesday noon by March nineteenth to Gregory dot Stanley at Birmingham AL dot gov or Shanta dot CFS at Birmingham AL dot gov. If you have questions or concern, please feel free to call the office at two, five, four, twenty-three, oh, two. And I want to just reiterate what the mayor brought up. If people are interested in the Violence Reduction Strateg- Strategic Plan, please go out to the Cross Plicks on March nineteenth at twenty, twenty twenty-five from four to six PM. So definitely want to encourage people to, you know, to go out. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Counselor Tate. Counselor Williams.
Uh, thank you. First of all, I wanted to give a shout out to our city attorney, Ms. King, because I think that there's been a lot of positive press with the work that she has done specifically around D-NAT and code enforcement. And I keep seeing that popping up, and it is well-received that, you know, we have these nuisances in the city that affect residents directly and her team, and she is going after that. So just wanted to give that quick shout out because I continuously see that in the media. You owe me one. All right, today's regularly scheduled Economic Development Tourism Committee meeting has been canceled because we do not have any submissions. Our next work session will take place on Tuesday, April the first, at eleven thirty in Conference Rooms D and E. If you will email India dot Bailey at Birmingham AL dot gov by the twenty-seventh, we would appreciate it. Brown Springs Neighborhood Conference Call will be Thursday, March twentieth at six. Southeast Lake Neighborhood will be Monday, March twenty-fourth at six at East Lake United Methodist Church. And Crestwood South will be at their normal time on March twenty-fourth, six thirty at the Jewish Community Center. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Pratim Alexander.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. These are announcements for District Seven. I do want to begin with thanking the Southwest Alliance, the association on Sunday. I had the opportunity to introduce and present on their behalf the Lifetime Achievement Award for our retired Judge Carol Smithman. So it was very nice to have that opportunity to present those accolades on their behalf. So we're very grateful for the work that she has done in our community. These are the neighborhood meetings that we have scheduled this week in District Seven. Tonight, the Green Acres Neighborhood Association will meet at six thirty PM at the Lifting Christ Worship Center. Then on Thursday, we'll have the joint meeting of the Hillman and Hillman Park Neighborhood Associations. They will meet at five PM at the Hillman Station, and actually, that's at the Hopewell Baptist Church on Jefferson Avenue. And the Germania Park Neighborhood Association will meet six PM via conference call. I do want to say that I was grateful to join my colleagues attending the National League of Cities meeting in Washington DC last week. We did have a very encouraging visit with our federal representatives. And so I want to thank our colleagues for being able to go to those visits and talk about issues that are very important to the City of Birmingham. We wanted to be gracious to each of them and thank them for what they've done for the city, as well as do a little bit of campaigning to bring other things back to the City of Birmingham. So I'm grateful to each of them, and I'm grateful to have had the opportunity. This is a great opportunity, not only to go out on Capitol Hill and talk about what's going on in the City of Birmingham, to also learn and from other elected officials throughout the country and have opportunity to hear about best practices. I was excited to preside over the Large Cities Council as the Chair for that council this year, and we did have some good information that was received. One thing, it was a very different climate this year. We know we've had changes in federal government that really are impacting us here locally. One of the things that we discussed in the Large Cities Council is that for years, small cities have always had to negotiate and bond together to get things for each of their municipalities. And so there was a caution to us as large cities. We're sort of in that same mood when we talk about NIH grants that are maybe taken away from one of our largest employer. We talk about bond, different tax exemptions that will no longer be in place for certain, pulling certain bonds. And this is where we talk about trying to put in, replace more hot potholes in transportation. So again, it was just a little bit of encouragement and an ask for those of us as large cities how we're going to have to sort of navigate in that, the way that small cities have always done, and glean together and try to get the things that we need from the federal government. So thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, thank you, Pratim Alexander. Counselor Smitham.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next Budget and Finance meeting will meet on Monday, March twenty-fourth, at three thirty PM in the council chambers. Submissions are due Wednesday, March nineteenth by noon. Submissions received afternoon will be placed on the next Budget and Finance agenda. Tonight, Five Point South will meet in the South Hall of Highland United Methodist Church at six PM. Woodland Park will meet this Monday, March twenty-fourth, at Woodland Park Church of Christ at six PM. And then lastly, Railroad Park will host a Resources at Railroad and Community Mental Health and Wellness Fair today from four to six PM. They will have food trucks, door prizes, school performances, games, and more. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I feel like I'm sitting in a hole over here. I'm going to be, yeah, I can see Wardene eye to eye now. While y'all were off having fun in Washington, I had my knee replaced, and I'm a lot shorter now than I was. Anyway, the next, the next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is scheduled for March twenty-sixth at three thirty PM in the council chambers. Tonight, we have two neighborhood association meetings. No, we have one. One, at Five Point South Neighborhood will meet in the Highlands United Methodist Church Fellowship Hall. So in case you didn't hear Counselor Smitham say it, now you've heard me say it too. So they're having a meeting six o'clock. And then the next Monday, the twenty-fourth, the Crestwood South Neighborhood Meeting will be at the Levite Jewish Community Center, also at six PM. If you have any concerns or issues that you see things in the city, call three, one, one and report them. Because if you don't report them, they won't get fixed. So just, that's just as plain as I can put it. Some citizen has to report everything that's wrong in order for it to get fixed. So if you see a sewer cover that's fallen in the hole or somebody's run over and it's broken into a million people, call and report it. Or take a picture of it and download the My Behem three, one, one app on your phone so that you can send it in and they can see exactly what it looks like. But it is another thing where citizens need to participate because the city doesn't have enough workers to go find all the things that are wrong in our city. We need help from people who actually see what's wrong and then report it. So I thank you for that in advance. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we will have Community Development Committee meeting that will take place at two PM in council chambers today. Tomorrow, the Park and Recreation Board will take place, not at Legion Field, but at Oxmore Community Center over in District Seven. So let me repeat. The Park and Rec Board meeting will take place at nine AM at the Oxmore Community Center. So residents in that area, you know, please make sure that you attend. The Park and Rec Board is trying to do a really good job at just making sure that we move the meeting around so that people in different areas, different districts have an opportunity to attend, share their thoughts, concerns, and be in the know of what's going on. So, and then lastly, we have the Kingston Neighborhood Association meeting that will take place on Monday at six PM at the Royal Event Center. As well as, they will have the Alabama CEAL or SEAL Kingston Kickoff. It's an opportunity to spring into fitness on Saturday, March the twenty-second, from one thirty PM to three thirty PM at Stockton Park. This is an opportunity for you to join your community in taking control of your health. You can learn about walking groups, zumba, chair yoga, and more in your neighborhood. So Saturday, this Saturday, March twenty-second, at Stockton Park, at one thirty PM to three thirty PM, come out there and do some chair yoga and get in control of your health. And that concludes my announcement.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. In District Eight, we have some neighborhood meetings. The Graymont Neighborhood will meet Wednesday at four thirty in person at the Smithfield Library. And not quite a Neighborhood Association meeting, we have the Five Points West Framework Plan meeting with the Planning Department on March twentieth, that's a Thursday, at six PM at the West Precinct. And on the arts front, we've, this is Fred Shuttlesworth Day, so happy Fred Shuttlesworth Day. Shuttlesworth was born on this day in nineteen twenty-two. And throughout the week, you can head over to the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute to explore special features, images, and artifacts with historical information about Reverend Shuttlesworth's impact on Birmingham and beyond. And you can also stop by the Commons. That's the little storefront area near, next to the bookstore to watch the Alabama Public Television Documentary on his life. Also, this Saturday at eight PM, Broadway diva Cap- Capathia Jenkins and three-time Grammy nominee Ryan Shaw will light up the stage with all your favorite Aretha Franklin hits, led by conductor Chris Confessori and backed by our very own Alabama Symphony Orchestra. This high-energy glittering tribute to the Queen of Soul includes hits like Respect and Think, well, ranging from Respect and Think to Natural Woman, Chain of Fools, Amazing Grace, and so many more. Well, ranging from Respect and Think to Natural Woman, Chain of Fools, Amazing Grace, and so many more. Visit alabamasymphony.org for more information. And, and then finally, on the arts announcements, if you're interested in learning more about public sculpture and its role in Birmingham, you can join the Birmingham Museum of Art next Saturday, March twenty-ninth, from one to three for a dynamic conversation with local artists Willie Williams, Randy Gachet, and Ajin Williams as they explore the impact of public sculpture in Birmingham. The program will begin with an insightful discussion in the BMA Auditorium, and it'll be followed by an interactive walking tour right out back at CityWalk Birmingham. This tour will specifically focus on works near the museum, right near the museum doors that were created by the talented guest speakers. And we're back out walking now that the weather's gotten a little less cold. And you can, we still have a few pleasantly crisp mornings left, so you can, we're doing our weekly walk around the around the crossplex. But now we're meeting up on Wednesday mornings at eight A. M. at the Starbucks. One final announcement, the Central Alabama Carpenters and Millwright Training Center is having an open house. And this is happening in Pelham at one-hundred Commerce Drive in Pelham, Alabama. And that's April seventeenth from ten to two. So you can find out how they are training professional carpenters and even sign up to learn how to be a carpenter and millwright. So wanted to just put that out there for workforce development and encourage more people to pursue construction trades, which are very lucrative. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Clark, especially for including that, that last announcement. Was able to go to that open house several years ago. And it was a really amazing opportunity that they and other labor union locals provide to people, you know, who are aspiring to get into the workforce. Really tremendous opportunities available through them and through any other of our local labor unions. For District Five, the Central City Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six P. M. at the Birmingham Central Public Library. North Avondale Neighbors Association will meet on Thursday, March twentieth, at six P. M. at the MLK Recreation Center. Southeast Lake Neighborhood Association will meet next Monday, March twenty-fourth, at six P. M. at East Lake United Methodist Church. Our Transportation Committee, as I mentioned to Mayor Woodfin earlier, will be next Monday, March twenty-fourth, at two P. M. And we, again, we have invited all of our utilities providers to show up at that meeting, prepared to report out on work that's going on throughout Birmingham. And I, I'm, I would, I'm inviting all of my fellow counselors to show up at that meeting. This is certainly an issue that we hear about all the time from our constituents. And especially if you have documentation of, you know, a street excavation that has not been properly repaired. I have one constituent who's going to be sending me a file that they put together of utility poles that have ratty wires hanging off of them or, you know, portions of a broken pole hanging off of them and just otherwise look ratty. So I'm calling all of these guys on the carpet. This is something, you know, that impacts the appearance of our city and quality of life. So this is our opportunity to let, put them on notice. So again, that, that meeting's Monday at two P. M. here in the council chambers. If you have items to submit, please contact Kimberly Phillips at kimberly.phillips@birminghamal.gov. Just another reminder that Birmingham Park and Recreation is now hiring for summer lifeguards. Please contact Terry Sewell at two oh five, two five four, twenty-one eighty-nine for more information. Finally, please mark your calendar for April, Saturday, April twelfth, for District Five Day of Service in Smithfield in partnership with House Proud from eight-thirty to one-thirty P. M. This is one of our ARPA-funded projects where we're going to be helping homeowners do some exterior beautification. So we need people who are prepared to do a little bit of gardening and house painting and other sort of small tasks like that. So again, that will be Saturday, April twelfth, from eight-thirty to one-thirty P. M. And we'll have details on the exact location later, but you can contact our office for that information. And then finally, as, as Pretim Alexander mentioned about the National League of Cities Conference last week, just wanted to give a report out from the Board of Directors. National League of Cities has forty board members, which I have the honor of being one of them. And the, there was a lot of conversation, as you might imagine, around the federal funding freeze that has impacted pretty much, you know, every municipality across the United States that receives federal funding. So we sort of had a roundtable discussion about how exactly that is impacting those representative cities. And in most cases, it's not only, you know, one grant, but it's a across-the-board impact on projects that are non-controversial, infrastructure stuff like streets and sidewalks. So it was great to get that sort of perspective. And then also talk about various initiatives happening across the country regarding housing and how to increase the inventory of affordable housing across the, the country and very, and how that's happening in various places. So, you know, it was, it was a good meeting. You know, particularly enjoyed getting to meet with our federal legislators and get their perspective on, you know, what's occurring with the new administration. Senator Tuberville was particularly insightful in some of his comments. So again, I'm proud to be able to serve the city of Birmingham in that capacity. So that concludes my announcements. Yes, Counselor Clark?
Thank you. I know yesterday at the BBA, we, we both talked to someone who's involved with the Northern Beltline Project. And it appears that it's going forward, whether we like it or not. So I, I know I asked you about maybe letting him present at committee of the whole, but maybe Transportation Committee would be a better venue for the detail that might be involved. And I'm not sure that I will ever like the project, but I'm open to learning more about it. And, and he did some myth busting with me during our conversation. So I, I just think it's important because the first, the first, you know, when four fifty-nine was built, it really generated a lot of suburban, a lot of sprawl that really took a toll on Birmingham and sort of killed our downtown. And so I think we just need to know what's coming and if there are any opportunities for the city to benefit. Where it mostly looks like we won't, you know, there might be some things we can do with annexation and other strategies to try to make it a win for us, so.
Right. Thank you for that suggestion. I'm certainly getting in contact with Mr. Staley to, to organize that. Ms. Clark, we have public speakers.
Yes, sir. Rennie, is it Hyatt? Ms. Hyatt?
I am Renee Hyatt. I think my solution's gotten solved. I think my solution's gotten solved with the street sanitation, it's about garbage cans being stolen. And the neighbors don't have garbage cans, but they're saying the owner of these duplexes is gonna have to buy another garbage can. I don't feel like that's right. But that's, you know, that's the case. I guess that's the case. But this has been going for like three months. One of the neighbors who lives across the street has taken their garbage can and keeps it behind their house. And they pull it out on garbage day so the garbage people can get it. Then they take it back behind their house. So these duplexes only have no crash cans and there's two sides to this duplex. But I talked to the guy who's over the sanitation thing. He said he's gonna see what he can do and take care of it. But the bottom solution is they don't recover that garbage can, they gotta pay for a garbage can. I don't feel like that's right.
That's interesting. Thank you for, for sharing that. Counselor Moore?
I was, I was gonna ask the same question that my colleague just asked. There is a chip in each of the...
Yeah, it's not a GPS tracking chip.
So, yeah, it's a, it's a, if I recall correctly, it's an RFID chip that says when the side loading truck picks it up, it has a scanner that can read it. So if the garbage can shows up in another location in the city, you know, I don't know the internal processes, but you could flag that number, that particular garbage can if it shows up somewhere else. Is that correct?
Right, because it's specifically assigned. That's exactly right.
Yeah. So...
But why worry about the chip when there's just a number on the side? They were putting too much focus on the chip.
So if it shows, what, that, what that means is, is that if those, those garbage cans show up somewhere else in the city and we identify them, then they could be returned to the homeowner at that point.
Okay. Now, the other thing is, the garbage people, I mean, they do a great job, but their truck, when they pick up these cans, they just stole these cans. So y'all will replace those cans. Why, if one's stolen, they won't replace it? I mean, that does not make sense.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out. Chief?
Yes, so we have staff that's been doing the follow-up on those. So some of it is just a case-by-case basis where we do follow up with investigation around whether they're stolen, whether they've been misplaced. So it really is case-by-case, so, but we have staff following up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Counselor Abbott?
Regarding that topic, if you find your garbage can that someone stole, should you take it back? Or you, should you let the city take it back?
So our belief is that if someone was brazen enough to take it, then that could be confrontational. So we would ask that they would notify us so that in the event it becomes confrontational, we can have city staff engage to assist in recovery.
Okay, 'cause you do know which number is assigned to which residence.
That's correct.
It's just that the chip was a problem. Thank you.
Right. Okay.
W. A. Casey.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Deacon W. A. Casey. I'm with Sixteenth Street Baptist Church. I'm spending, senior deacon, I'm spending a duty. But I have a, there's a, there's a pact, I just got, well, just a few hours ago, I just got out of the city, Birmingham City Jail, a trespass, trespassing, trying to bring attention to a situation going down at Sixteenth Street that needed to be looked into. There was a public partnership created some time ago with that parking lot there and that, in two churches. The agreement says something like this. It was a real agreement with Mr. Ben Green, which was Mayor Anton's assistant. Did I start over? Okay. It was an agreement made between Mr. Ben Green with Mayor Anton's assistant and Mayor Anton and the church. And the agreement was that the city would buy, so the city would use taxpayer dollars, build that parking lot there. It would go all the way to the other church and that the other church, because the next church could park there for free. And the inner citizens of Birmingham parked there free. 'Cause we have no parking. There's only a parking lot. We, we own additional land, but there's only a parking lot we have, we have own. And only a parking lot paid. And that was for citizens and for soldiers and stuff to park there for free. Well, that trust, that promise had been broken. Now, I'm, I'm a firm believer, I'm a pastor's kid, and I'm a firm believer that you gotta be a hundred percent true, a hundred percent wrong. Can't be half-pregnant. Now, the church is going to get public funds to build amenities to help them. We need to stick to that agreement. However, the church have changed since I've been there. I mean, about, since the new pastor there, my alter price, about eighty, I guess ninety percent of the original people there have, uh, became, have left, either died or whatever. But the agreement still is staying. Now, they are buckhustling now. They're all excited about raising six million dollars to build a building, the middle parking lot that we don't even need. You come to church on Sunday, we have about a hundred members there. I'm afraid that if we have a downturn like we have before, we can't put the maintenance on that, on that building out there. We may be in four clothes, new church and everything. And the people who pushing, the three main people pushing it, not even from Birmingham. You know, they just scamming the stuff that we did, those fools in Birmingham back during the civil rights movement. And I was one of them. I was in the second pantywaikup. We're in wheel. But I need y'all to look into that. Now, they are cutting a lot up now. They're gonna take a fourth of the lot away. And that's unfair to citizens of Birmingham. But once the parking lot on the left-hand side, that is Algonquin Power, Algonquin Power parking lot. So when it gets fully developed down there, that's the only parking lot we have. And I need y'all to look into that. The trust was there. I have bought it to the church many times. I've bought the deacon board more than times. They constantly determine to do what they want to do down there.
Is this the parking lot between St. Paul and Sixteenth Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, but right now, tearing the parking lot up, so we have listed twenty-seven parking spaces for the public. And both churches having each other's church, they need that parking also. There was a agreement made with them. But the people there now, they don't care about agreements. They don't care about being good neighbors. They want to build a building that we don't even need. And what are the buildings for, I mean, visitors? We bought real price there to build a ministry, not to be a general contractor.
Counselor Clark?
So I, I've been wondering about that. So the building that's being planned is taking up the part, the dedicated parking for the churches, right?
The church, right.
And so you're right, the Alabama Power Block is supposed to be developed according to a master plan. And it, it's only, you know, it's only an interim use that it can be surface parking. I mean, I can't speak for their land. I just, you know, I just feel like it's not a long-term strategy to depend on that always being blank. So I, I don't know what to tell you because I do think that's y'all's issue to figure out.
You, the more many you give the church, the more many fine reasons to tear the church up. I mean, then the original bells at the church, the original doors, obviously, one of the original old doors. They care if they're gonna refurbish them. They ain't, they ain't show back up. They got some new doors eventually. The, they're gonna cross off the church. And then they tear the parking lot up and took the basement, took the basement, tore the basement out and took, put a, put a movie theater down there, you know? And they just buckhustling and they try to tourists. I mean, we bought them to build a ministry up, not a tourist. And I'm just one person I'm speaking. I'm like a hundred percent, a hundred percent right, a hundred percent wrong. My dad always told me, right is right always, and wrong is always wrong. You can't be a little wrong. You all, you're a little wrong, you can't be, always can't be a little pregnant. You're all pregnant or no pregnant. They're in the right train station, but they're on the wrong track, going the wrong way.
Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll look into it.
Stop giving them money. Cut it off. The more them, they get, the more they, and they'll, please help us. Thank you.
Sir. Next speaker, please.
Ms. Milhouse?
I, I got a picture of it. I'll, I'll send to the group.
Am I ready?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Janay Milhouse, but I also go by Coach True. I'm from Birmingham, Alabama, actually born and raised in Enslie. However, I did live in Houston for about six years. And right now, I'm commuting between Atlanta and Birmingham just to spread the awareness and connect the dots. I am here because this is House of True. This is actually one of the initiatives of Aprilian Jameson Foundation, which is a nonprofit. House of True is actually a brand in which I provide mental health services. In my profession, I am a mental health practitioner. I am a social worker, a medical, clinical, social worker. And in my brand, again, I go by True because I am providing the truths of the world and revealing those things by shedding light with tools for personal development and self-awareness. House represents healing our universe through self-awareness and empowerment. And I provide and bridge that gap between traditional therapy and modalities and combine that with alternative therapies. Alternative therapies such as mindfulness, breathwork, meditation, yoga, and empowerment. I also am a certified life coach in which I provide individual sessions, group sessions, couple sessions, and family sessions. We have Mindfulness Monday, every single Monday at seven PM Central, in which I go live and check on people in the community, just to check on our mental health and our mental well-being. So again, House of True provides that individual sessions with people just so we can shine awareness on our mental health. The reason why I'm here again is because I've been reaching out to the city for the past several years. I've received no responses from anyone. And again, I'm wanting to bring this house to everyone's foresight so that we can provide resources for the community. We talk about a lot of different things when it comes to getting people off of the streets and when it comes to gun violence. However, our mindsets aren't evolving. The city is growing. The people are not evolving. The people are not growing. So if we provide, again, different exposure, just to expand the minds of our city, it will help us to eliminate some of those poverty mindsets. These tools, again, are some of the ways that you can provide that. Breathwork, being intentional, motivation, yoga. I'm needing some help. Again, that's the reason why I'm here. I have all of the resources. I have the systems. I provide virtual sessions and group sessions, all online and in person. And I'm just wanting to do a mindfulness tour with each of the districts. And I'm wanting help on knowing when and how to start that process. Again, I'm seeking funding, more so clients. I need people. I need the people. I've reached out to several different community resources, and right now, I'm just needing help from you all so I can get started. Again, I have everything that I need except for the people to provide the services to. I've done all that I can on my end, and right now, I'm just here to ask for some help and some guidance. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. I would particularly point you towards the Department of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. They have, you know, resources available, but there's also a program, annual program called Bold that funds various community partners that do work similar to, to what you're doing. You know, lots of different things, but that may be something that you would be eligible for. So, you know, does anyone else have suggestions?
I, I believe in what you're doing and what you're talking about.
Thank you.
And so I want to help you. But I was thinking, you know, our youth detention facility, Monique Greer seems to be open to, you know, some alternative ways to help people with their self-master, young people who are in youth detention. So that might be an avenue. UAB Arts and Medicine, they contract with poets and, and yoga teachers, you know, to help bring some healing arts into the medical realm. And, you know, I'll just reach out to you and give you my contact maybe.
Please, because I worked at UAB, so I've tried working with them while I was working there and I...
Arts and Medicine or some other avenue?
I worked through the Addiction Substance Abuse Department, but I also taught yoga at the Recreation Center.
Okay.
Yeah, so I need some other avenues. I've tried.
All right, yeah.
Council Tate?
I would suggest myself and my colleague, Council Smithman, we do offer free counseling in our district to our constituency. Dr. Nadia Richardson with the Black Women's Mental Health Institute would probably be a good plug for you as well.
Can I get a pen? Oh, y'all gonna give me this information?
Just give us your information. I have my staff to get your information. But you also can plug into the Majesty the Peace Collective, which is gonna be an ecosystem that we are building resources for those in community. Coming soon, and we are in the planning stage, but we're gonna do an initiative that's called Heal the Block, where you take all of the resources, you know, into the community. Actually, I launched that initiative back in December in Smithfield, but it's meant to be outside, where you bring every partner in the ecosystem, you know, into community and to the people, as you're saying, bring it to the people. So myself and Council Smithman is gonna be doing, along with some of the organizations, the Offender Alumni Association, who leads the hospital work around violence reduction. We would love to have your information to make sure that we do get you planted, you know, into the ecosystem, into the community.
I'm ready.
Because healing, restorative justice, transformative justice, all of that is super important.
Absolutely.
You know, and as Council Clark said, you know, going to the youth detention center, Monique Greer, I have a great relationship with her. And I'm sure that she will welcome that, but, you know, really big into restorative practices. So we'd love to have your information to talk to you.
Thank you. I have business cards. If I can leave them with y'all.
You could.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Council Tate, you had an additional announcement that you wanted to...
Yes, sir. I got word that East Thomas Neighborhood Association meeting has been canceled. And also would like to say happy birthday, Hunter Williams. Happy birthday to you. Birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Hunter. Happy birthday to you. You're getting younger.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Wait, wait, wait. We got our officers on duty. Thank you, Officer Pinker and Officer Square for being here. Thank you. Appreciate it. Now, motion to adjourn.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Second. Meeting adjourned.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Darryl Love Quinn, City Council President and Representative for District Five on the City Council. We are here on our last day in Washington DC. The conversation here in DC at the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference is largely centered around the uncertainty that's happening with federal funding.
And so one of the hot topics was the issue of municipal bonds, whether we will have them say tax exempt, meaning that municipalities won't have to pay taxes on it because we learned that for every one dollar the federal government doesn't get, that saves cities two dollars on those municipal bonds. So really making sure that we continue to advocate for what's right for cities.
And it's very important that we make them aware of the impact that some of these looming changes will have on our universities, our residents, workforce development, childcare, roads, infrastructure. All of these changes will impact us.
But most importantly, just checking in with our federal delegation to let them know what we're experiencing and, you know, the issues that that's causing. So probably this year, more than ever, it's been important for us to sit down and have those face-to-face conversations.
We're gonna be all right. I just would say that it, more so ever, now it is time for all of us to work together and work together in harmony to make sure that we are doing the best that we can for the constituencies that we serve.
We need to have more residents, more constituents, reaching out to our federal leaders. So please, make sure you're reaching out to your congressperson, you're reaching out to your senator about the things that matter to you, about the things that, you know, would help you in your world. They need to know it. They need to be able to hear from you. So whether that's writing letters, sending emails, making phone calls, make sure that they know from your standpoint, what is it that you would like to see in your city?
We learned this week that as large cities, we're gonna have to start acting a little bit like our small cities. They've always known how to collaborate on a local, state, county level. And this is what I'll be bringing back to the city of Birmingham.